(Singing) I do worship you. Come on, get those hands in the air. I do worship you. Yes, I do.[22.80][22.80](Singing) I do. Yes, I do. (Applause) Community shall be restored. I'm your host, Prophet Cedric Banks along with...
Prophetess Demetta Banks.
We've got a great show for you today. We're gonna get right into it. A young lady, she's the Chief of Staff for Detroit City Councilman Scott Benson, and she's doing some great things out here in the community. She's getting ready to run now for District 2 State Representative. Tell us your name and what you've got going on.
My name is Carol Banks, and I am currently running for State Representative in District 2, which is Rosemont Park, Rosemont City, and the city of Detroit. I am running because I feel that we need to elect people who are community-oriented, people who are not gonna be afraid to actually work for the district. When you call my office or when you call me on my cellphone, I respond and I get things resolved. I'm your former school board member from 2009 to 2013. I'm your former ombudsman woman for the city of Detroit DPS. And also, I am currently working with the Senior Task Force for the city of Detroit, which is City Council, not just Councilman Benson, but all nine councilmen, women, men, and women. We have the Senior Task Force. We're actually working on the ramp program right now.
On what?
The ramp program.
Ramp.
Ramp, that's right. We have seniors. Well, how we got started with this? We had a senior who was homebound for about a year, couldn't get out of her house. She called our office, and we were able to work with a couple of companies, Home Depot, Lowe's. They gave us all the material free. We got a construction company to build it, Dan, Viglariles Construction Company out of Highland Park. They built the ramp at no charge. We got all the supplies. And now, we're working now with Lowe's, Home Depot, and Dan. We're gonna build about 14 more ramps on the east side of Detroit.[153.68][153.68](Applause)
You guys are really on the move there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
You guys are really on the move. Any questions for State Rep. candidate, Ms. Banks? Any questions? Go ahead.
I just want to know, do they have jobs down there? Where do you work at?
Currently, you would have to go on the city's website, and you would have to upload your resume, and then you can look to see what jobs are available. What happens if you're in our district and you apply for a job? We do try to work with you to try to help you be successful. Currently, you know, we have a couple of, I can't think of the group, Flexing Gate is in our district. And they're currently, well, I don't know if you've rode over there, over St. Cecilia, over Georgia. When you first looked at it, it was just a shed. You go now, and it's almost practically built. In September, they're gonna be having a hiring fair. What they're doing is they're looking for people who live on the east side of Detroit, and in particular, who live in Scott Benson's district, because they wanna hire people who are gonna be able to get to the job. So if you live in that particular area, they want people who can either walk to work, ride their bike to work, catch the bus to work, but make sure that they can get there on time and be productive. So yes, there is some hiring getting ready to go on in September.
Okay.
Wow, that's good news. That's good news there. How much are these jobs starting at?
Most of them start at $12 an hour.
Wow.
Some of them are temporary, some of them are contracted, and some of them are full-time with benefits. It kinda depends on the individual's resume as to what level they start you off at. But they're all starting at $12 an hour.
Wow, that's good. That's some good money there. $12 an hour.
That's pretty good. And then if you have management skills, they do have positions for management, people who have upper-level skills, people who have degrees. They're hiring. That's a whole different other level. But it depends basically on your resume and what your skill set has to offer. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, thanks.
I see you have some history with children and the elderly, so children and the elderly. Do you know about orphaned elders? The elders who live by themselves, they don't really have communication with their family members? You know, nobody's really around to help them. I've been hearing a lot about orphaned elders, you know, the people that are elderly that kinda get left behind.
Right, kinda got lost in the system because they were adopted or they maybe were never adopted but were in foster care, and then they kinda aged out of the system and became where they're able to take care of themselves, but they still don't have any family who's looking after them. I know a little bit about that only because I've worked with some students in DPS who were in foster care, and we had to help them kinda opt out of the system when they turned 18. Because usually what happens with that population of people, sometimes they go into those halfway houses, and then someone becomes guardian over them or begin to look after their affairs. But yes, I know a little bit about that population, not a whole lot. I've worked with it. But if there's any resources, I do have connections where I can help people who are on that level or trying to get out of the system and become independent. So yes, I do know a little, but not a whole lot. And I have, like I said, worked with a couple of children who I helped to get out of the system and become dependent. What happens is you have to go through the state of Michigan. They give you a few aptitude tests to see if you're able to be on your own. But if you can show as an adult after 21 that you're able to do that, you'll still receive benefits from the state of Michigan, meaning that you'll probably still receive that paycheck and those medical benefits, but they check on you periodically. So yes, I know a little bit about that, and I am able to help with resources on that as well.
Okay, one more.
Yes.
What about the elderly? Do you have any future programs that are beneficial to the elderly that live alone?
Now, when you say elderly, are you talking about 60 and over?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Currently, I work with the Senior Task Force. And in that program, what we try to do with our seniors is, you know, seniors have a hard time with filling out forms for Medicaid, Medicare. We work with them on that. Sometimes a senior will call me and say, "Hey, Carol, I'm in my house. I'm here alone. I wanna move now to go to assisted living." What I do is I take the application over, help them fill out the application, help them to be able to get into the assisted living. You know, now we have assisted living right on Jefferson, where you can go, matter of fact, I got my mother-in-law in that place. She moved in here in 2013, and she's still in there, and she's doing fantastic. So what I do is try to encourage those seniors who wanna leave their homes to go into assisted living because you have permanent care. Plus, they base your room and board is based on your income. So if you're low to moderate income, you may only spend $265 a month for living there. You will have to pay your lights, which is normally $40, and normally your gas rate is from $13 to $50. So they make it affordable for you. Not only that, you receive meals while you're there. You receive cooked meals. So you're still independent. You still can take care of yourself. You still can manage your own money, but you get a lot of assistance in that building. So we have that on Jefferson, and I would suggest those people who need help, all you do is walk in, get the application, fill it out. They assign you a social worker. The social worker works with you through the whole process. And I've said, I've worked with getting at least 10 seniors in that building, and they're still in there, and they're happy, including my mother-in-law. And it's based all on your income. And across the street from there, now, if you don't need assisted living on that same little plaza, if you're 62 and older, you can go into the senior building right there. And again, that's based on your ability to pay, what you're receiving. So I do know a lot about those programs because I work with seniors on a daily basis. So yes, to that question.
Thank you.
Okay, we're here with Carol Banks. She is the Chief of Staff for the Detroit City Council, and she is running for State Representative, District Number 2. And she's a mighty woman. She's doing some great things out there. Anybody else with any questions for Carol Banks? You just came in, Bishop. You ready to go, huh?
Ready to rock 'em. I'm doing good. How are you?
What would you suggest that would be a safeguard for those individuals that deal with these landlords that's not keeping up with their end of bargains? And the reason why I ask such questions is because I'm one of the ones that get out and I talk to the people that's going through these problems.
Okay.
Now, without even asking, I wanna give you something that I think that you should take with you would be great.
Okay.
And start telling those landlords that when they file for quit to stop paying, you know, they don't want you in their property anymore. They wanna evict you. And 30-day notice, tell them also that they gotta go get a state inspector to go out and inspect these properties before they have to show up to court in those 30 days.
Okay.
And I guarantee you that that will stop these landlords that they have that's not giving up to their end of leases who got... I'm going through it right now, because that's why I made it say it.
Okay.
You know, and then they don't wanna renew your lease, but now they want you to have receipts for paying your rent, and they don't even have receipts for paying your rent. You know what I'm saying? They're not giving up to their end, whereas they not maintaining the properties like they do. When we go to court, we don't have grounds to stand on because it only becomes persecution now.
Right.
And like I said, I'm saying because this is what I'm going through.
Got you.
And I'm a bishop. I'm a bounty hunter.
Got you.
But I, you know, those titles, those positions, none of that matters when you coming up against these old landlords.
Right.
And we got, and the city of Detroit, those of us that's left, we got a problem. We can't, if we don't fix income, how can we go to anything better?
Yeah.
We can't go now.[678.08][678.08](Applause) And I let you know because you wanna be for the end.
Yes.
So I'm letting you know the benefit and the advantage that you have because I talk to the people that suffer from these things. Yet they have a right to vote, but their attitudes keep them from the polls.
Got you.
They don't go.
Right, because they feel like, "I vote, but then nothing happens when it comes to my quality of life."
So if you wanna get the people...
So in other words, what you're saying to me as a policymaker and a legislator, I need to put in place some legislation on a state level that protects the consumer in the city of Detroit and in the three points who, when they're renting, and if there are issues, then I need to put something in place that we can protect you as a consumer, as a tenant. Now, I can say one thing. The city of Detroit just put in place, the city council just did an ordinance for landlord tenants. Where now, in order to have property in the city of Detroit, you must register with the city of Detroit. You must register and have an inspection with building and safety. So that just happened maybe 45 days ago, now that you bring that up to me. That just recently happened. So what I'm hearing from you, let me get this correct, because I'm gonna win this, and I wanna, I wanna make sure I got this right.
I'm telling you, I'm not gonna lie.
Okay, I'm gonna, I like that.
You don't win.
I'm gonna win, but I need to make sure. You want legislation that protects you from the landlord when he does not have proper inspections, does not keep the property clean, does not give you receipts once you paid your money. That's a simple piece of legislation. And it has nothing to do with Republican or Democrat.
That's right.
It has something to do with the quality of life and with people in the state of Michigan. That's something I can truly work on, and I would like for you to help me with it once we... I mean, because I need somebody who has experience so that I know what I'm talking about.
I'm here right now. I'm changing. Roach is so bad in my house, they sit there and watch the black TV with me. My license plate, my license plate. Now, I get home right now, Roach is gonna meet me at the door and say, "What's up?" I already got license plates in my house because the old landlord went down there and changed my home to a business house. So now, the name that I had in them didn't even matter. DTE cut me off. You see what I'm saying? But God...
Oh, yeah. Ain't nothing but God. Amen. Amen.
You see what I'm saying? And Mark talking to Batman.
All right. All right.
And that woman.
I got you.
And coming in dinner with these people, not even the people at my own church.
I got you.
You hear what I'm saying?
I feel you. Sometimes you gotta go outside.
And that's all I say.
It's called the extended family.
That's right. This is my family from day one.
Okay.
And I tell you, I don't got license plates. I'm telling the Lord to back. They want something to eat, just like I want to eat in my house. You hear me? I'm having breakfast. I got black mold in my house.
Oh, my God.
But God is what keeps me, keep this fire inside me. And I assure you, if you step out there and you get that legislative implement back and put that down, the people gonna back you. They gonna support you. They gonna stand for you. And the Bible says, "Your weapon for..."
Hold the Bibles. Shout it out.
...
I accept. I accept, and I'm willing to take that challenge on. And I am not afraid, and I will work both sides of the aisle once I get to Lansing to make sure we do something to better the quality of your life and everybody's life around you.
And Bishop, last night, if I can shine me in, I gave you a word of prophecy last night that in this season, you getting ready to meet new relationships that'll impact your life.[924.48][924.48](Applause)
He's taking these self, come in your life and do some burning from you. Don't you never met. You sat right there and said, "I want you to work with me."
I had no idea she was gonna say nothing like that. I didn't tell her to say that about you.
I didn't know it.
I didn't know it either.
I tell you.
I trust and believe.
But just accept it, receive it. That's what we gonna do. We gonna receive it.[957.28][957.28](Applause) That's how we gonna do that.
That's right. Nothing I won't say. And I think to say this again, I keep trying to tell people, local elections count.
That's right.
That's what makes a difference.
And Bishop, let me tell you right now, she already walking in power because she the Chief of Staff for the Detroit City Council.
She's gonna get there anyway. She knows what she wants.
So she already walking the statue of power.
Yes. You're already blessed.
Thank you.
You already knew.
I accept. I accept.
We can shout on that.[992.00][992.00](Applause)
I accept. I do accept. Trust me.
He said, "No way."
Come on now.
Please, it's the Lord.
Amen.
Boy, he said, "I'm gonna leave with your enemies."
Come on. Make 'em love Christ. That's right. Yes. You're Christians. That's right. You know the Bible too.
Somebody say hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Hey, hallelujah. I accept. Isn't that...[1025.11][1025.11](Applause)
Well, Carol, it definitely looks like you don't want some support in here. There's definitely some people really behind you and really get behind you and really wants to push you and really believe in what you're saying and what you're trying to do.
But I'm not just saying it. I'm solution-driven. I'm gonna tell you in my heart. I feel like we have to do a battle's job when we get elected, and we have to service the people. That's what we...
Pastor Demetta, do you have a question for Chief of Staff Carol Banks of the Detroit City Council?
Those are some exciting things that you are doing with this city council currently. When you get into office, what are your goals? What are the top three goals that you have, the top three priorities that you wanna do for the people that you'll be servicing?
What I'm gonna, well, what I plan to do is piggyback on where I am now because right now, I have the resources, and I know I can extend that across the state of Michigan. There's one piece that I have is with children. I'm a strong believer in public education and that we have to make sure that public education receives the dollars that we need so that we can educate our children. But in that piece, I wanna reach out to the parents of the children who are in school. It's very hard to educate a child if the environment that is surrounded around them is not conducive to learning. So that's gonna be one piece, public education and working with parents and young people. My second piece is health, not just physical health or affordable health, but mental health. Amen. In our community, people are afraid to get help when they have mental issues, when they're feeling suicidal, when they're feeling depressed. So for me, I wanna really work with the system because we as African-Americans don't like to go lay on somebody's couch. But sometimes you gotta go lay on somebody, Scott. You gotta talk it out so that you can save yourself and save your family. That's my second piece. Now, my third piece is really gonna be a tough one because everybody's talking about it. That's insurance, car insurance, property insurance, and...
Car insurance is sky-high.
Yes, it's sky-high. But how do we fix that? I had a meeting the other day with a group of health providers last Friday, and what they talked about is they wanna help the issue, but they're saying the biggest issue is the cost of when you have a car accident and then you get severely injured. And what they're saying, if you're up under Medicaid, Medicare, the government will only pay so much for those injuries. So what happens is the hospitals have to suck up the rest of that cost. So how do we fix that? The other piece is we have those people who are injured but not injured. Then they go and get a trial lawyer, then they win millions and millions of dollars, and then what does that do? That shoots up the cost. So we are really, I mean, for this one, it's gonna be tough because we're gonna have to get in a room with the health providers, with the lawyers, with the insurance company, and we're gonna have to figure out how we can cut these costs. Because if you're gonna tell me from the state that I gotta have car insurance, but I work every day and I can't afford car insurance, come on now, I got a job at 740. That is a problem. So how do we fix it? I don't have a solution on that one, but I know that we all gotta come together and fix it. So those are gonna be my three top priorities.
Oh, that's awesome right there. Is there a realistic chance where we can really get car insurance cut down?
There is a realistic chance.
Why have no other state rep been able to do that, though?
Well, one, because you gotta work with both sides. I have to keep saying this. You gotta work with both sides of the aisle. You can't be over here saying, "I'm a Democrat and I wanna fix insurance." And you can't be over here saying, "I'm a Republican and I wanna fix insurance." We gotta talk together because it's not just high for us in Detroit. It's high throughout the entire state of Michigan. So why aren't we talking as both sides of the aisle, Republicans and Democrats, saying, "How do we fix this? Where's the middle ground? How do we work to fix it for everybody?" So I think the fix to this is us talking to each other. We have to talk to each other. We can't be afraid. And I think that's where the problem is. No one wants to say that, "I'm a Republican and I'm fixing insurance, but I'm fixing it for everybody." So the two of us together have to figure out how we say, "I'm fixing it." And I'm fixing it for my constituents, and I'm fixing it for my constituents. So it's gotta be a middle ground. We as Republicans and Democrats gotta come together because in the end, the people hurt. So I don't have a solution for that, but if you guys have any ideals to fix car insurance, I need to know it because my first ideal, and nobody likes this, why don't we all just run the one final insurance company, Reed Insurance? They're in Saginaw, Flint. Run to them. Everybody go to them and say, "We're not going to anybody." They have the lowest car insurance, by the way, too. Reed Insurance.
Where, Saginaw?
I think they're out of, they're not out of Detroit. They're either out of Lansing or Saginaw. It's called Reed Insurance.
Okay, we're getting, we're winding down time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, we winding down time. We're here with Carol Banks.
That's right.
She is the Chief of Staff for the Detroit City Council. And she's running, she's running for State Representative, District Number 2. Well, as you know, Dave, Chief of Staff Carol Banks, you have something here?
I do. I do. I do. First of all, before we close out, I want you guys to see this. This is one of the second highest awards that you can receive from the city of Detroit. This is the Distinguished Service Award. The only other award you can receive from the city of Detroit higher than this is the Spirit of Detroit. In our district, we give out Distinguished Service Awards to those people who have actually done something in the community. And Pastor Cedric, Prophet Cedric Banks, you are shining light in this community.[1411.68][1411.68](Applause) I want to present it to you and your congregation. It's the Distinguished Service Award, and we give it to you from all nine city council members. All nine city council members have signed this. So it's something that you wanna really show and display, and those are their actual signatures. And we give it to you, and God bless you. We love you, and you keep up the good work.[1438.40][1438.40](Applause)
Mary Sheffield, Andre Spivey, all these great people who run the city of Detroit. Councilman Benson.
All right.
Wow.
All right.
Brenda Jones.
Yeah.
All the great ones who run the city.
As a city council, I wanna just thank you for continuing your good work in the community, and I want you to keep on pressing on. And I wanna say to you guys, I'm not a politician. I'm just gonna be honest with you all. I got into this by happenstance. When I was 13 years old, I was working for Congresswoman Carolyn Cheeks Kilpatrick, who was an awesome woman of God. I don't care what nobody says. But I got into this...
So you know about me personally?
I know the entire family personally. But what I'm saying is that I fell into this. And I think that in your life, every person has a purpose in their life. God gives everybody a purpose.
Yes, He does.
I didn't understand what my purpose was, but I was 13 years old, and I started doing this, working for different politicians. But for me, it was about advocating and listening to people and finding out people were hurting. And what I did as I grew and stayed in different positions, I took those positions, not for personal gain, but I took those positions to help people in the community with the resources that I could get. So the reason why I really wanna go to Lansing, guys, is because I wanna take the power of my office and help the community. And a lot of the problems, I'm running because God has given me the purpose. And my purpose is to take politics and make that my mission and teach people how power is in politics, and you can grow if you get involved.[1563.52][1563.52](Applause)
I gave Bishop Gaffey a word last night on a worldwide conference line, church by phone, that you were getting ready to meet people that's gonna like impact your life, right? And what did you say to him?
I just told him that, "Hey, I wanna help you, and we gonna work together on this."
I have one thing I need to say to you, and I know everybody here would agree. Lord, you know you've been so good.[1599.20][1599.20](Laughter) Lord, you know you've been so good.
Amen. Yes.
You washed over me all night long.
Yes.
Lord, you know you've been so good. Come on, Lord. Lord, you know you've been so good. Oh. Lord, you know you've been so good.
I'm Prophet Cedric Banks. Welcome. We'll see you next Saturday right here on the Community Shall Be Restored and Comcast Channel 90. We done had a show today, I tell you.[1655.84][1655.84](Applause) She's from the Detroit City Council. Not only is she from the Detroit City Council, she's the Chief of Staff for the Detroit City Council.
Amen.
And she's presenting us with a little something today. Come on up, Carol, and let them know everything.
Okay. Praise the Lord, saints.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord, saints.
Praise the Lord.
Bringing you greetings from Historic Eastlake Church on the east side of Jefferson. Pastor Michael G. Cunningham and First Lady Deary Cunningham, that's my church hall. But I am here on an official, on an official mission today. I'm here from Detroit City Council. I am the Chief of Staff for Detroit City Council and Councilman Scott Benson. Today, we are presenting one of the highest awards that you can receive from the city of Detroit. This goes down in our clergy, in our books, and we are giving it today to Pastor, Bishop, Prophet Cedric Banks.[1732.00][1732.00](Applause) This is the Distinguished Service Award for the city of Detroit. He has received it on behalf of his great works in the community, in the city of Detroit. So now, he is one of the most fantastic leaders that we have on the east side of Detroit in Council of Jefferson, Detroit. I bless you. I love you, and I am so honored to have to give you this award.
Put that down so beautifully, though.
Amen.
So beautifully, you know? That was awesome. I just don't know what to say, you know? It was great.[1777.76][1777.76](Screaming) I just got the Pastor of Bump Award. I thought that was it for me. You know, but this one coming, you know?
Amen.
It's unbelievable, you know? But I work hard in the community. I try hard. I bring a lot of effort.